Call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilman Glenn, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much for all this coming together, Lord. Lord, bless each one of our minds, Lord, and I also make great decisions for our great city of Lima. Bless our administration, bless every city council here, also the resident and the city of Lima. Oh, God, I ask you for the blessing of my Father tonight, Lord. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Ms. Crayer?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Dr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Scheduled public hearings tonight, we have the 2017 tax budget.
We do have a call for that.
And we'll have the clerk read the call.
Notice is hereby given that on the 11th day of July 2016, 7:00 PM in the Lima City Council chambers, 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held upon the 2017 tax budget for the city of Lima. All interested persons desiring to speak to the budget will be given an opportunity to do so at the time. Following is a summary of the budget. General Fund, $32,775,558. Water Works, $16,775,289. Sewer Disposal Fund, $13,092,501. Garbage and Refuge, $2,749,231. Guaranteed Water Deposit, $7,242,339,000. Sewer Improvement, $10,760,914. Stormwater Sewer, $2,468,967. Miscellaneous Funds, $21,242,112. For a total of $107,106,811. Copies of the entire tax budget are in file in the office of the Clerk of Counsel and the Office of the City Auditor, Municipal Center, 50 Town Square, and will be open to public inspection during regular working hours.
Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak towards the issue of the 2017 tax budget? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. The second call, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the issue of the 2017 tax budget for the city of Lima, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Third and final call, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of the 2017 tax budget for the city of Lima, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare that public hearing closed. The next public hearing is the CDBG Public Hearing Number Three. Is there a call for that?
No.
This public hearing is for discussion of the 2016-17 CDBG Consolidated Plan Fund allocations. Ms. Odom, I'll let you speak first on this.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind those listening at home and those in the audience that this is the third and final public hearing for the 1617 CDBG and Home Funds allocation from the federal government, from HUD. We've had a series of very productive meetings, and I appreciate the time and patience of counsel and the applicants in trying to make some very difficult decisions about some very limited funds. At the last meeting, there was discussion about moving some funds, $15,000 for property maintenance and about $8,000 from demolition, and placing that into the Bradfield Center request to allow them to be fully funded to the $55,755. After that last meeting, as our tradition, we double-checked our proposed allocations with HUD. There is a small problem in that the way that they view our allocations is that some projects are considered public service activities. And again, for those at home, this information will be up on our website tomorrow. Those in attendance, there are copies of this information at the back. Public service activities, that category activity cannot exceed 15% of the new funds, the new money we received this year and our program income. Those activities that would be receiving public service funds this year would be the police services, housing counseling, the Bradfield Senior Center, the summer recreation program, and Rhodes College. Those, the total of their funding requests exceeded our 15% public service cap by almost $8,000, $7,856. After discussion with the mayor, with the finance director, with HUD, and the public works director, we would like to recommend a solution to this. Currently, in that group of public service projects, the summer recreation, the summer parks program is funded at $15,000. By removing summer recreation from the public service total allocation and funding that with general fund dollars, that drops our public service cap down to 13.86%, so we stay within the required public service cap. And it does a couple other things as well. It removes the recreation program from a lot of the red tape that the families need to go through and our small parks staff needs to go to in qualifying kids and constantly verifying their income and participation in the program to meet CDBG deadlines. The other is that by moving those funds back, that also allows some money to be put back into demolition. By taking summer rec and putting it in general funds, it would also allow the demolition allocation to go back up, and we're recommending it to go up to 92,624. And again, that's on the spreadsheet that's provided for this evening. So it brings it back close to its original request of $93,000. We've been speaking for some time about the opportunity that's coming up for residential demolition, but commercial demolition still remains a problem in this community. We're hoping that by taking summer rec out of the CDBG equation, funding it with general fund, it would allow us to continue to fund the Bradfield Center, the new allocation, which is greater than last year's allocation, and to put some money back into demolition. So that's our recommendation for this evening.
Okay. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the proposed allocations of CDBG funds, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. For the second call, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak to the proposed allocation of 2016-17 CDBG funds? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Before I have the third call, I will open it up to council members.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Ms. Odom, do we need a formal motion? Okay. Law Director shaking his head, yes. That's good enough for me. Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the recommended adjustments as explained by Ms. Odom of removing the summer recreation from one of the five public service projects under CDBG to the general fund. And we take that money, $15,000, and allocate that to demolition based on our actions at the last meeting of reducing that to help fund the Bradfield.
Second.
Second.
Motion, the second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
One thing I want to say, just make sure by putting recreation in general fund, this vote, we will continue having recreation, it's not going to leavate the money because it's in general fund. I brought it free counsel about the long-term future, that it will stay in general fund. And where our development person is saying that it's more easier to keep it there. So I don't want to see three or four years down the road, this be one of the programs get cut, and we don't have the summer program. And that's the reason why we're all the way out there. So everything at ease, and I accept it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Odom.
Mr. President and Law Director, I'm just to clarify the motion. What I would recommend is that you move to accept the draft of 7/11/16 of the CDBG and Home Projects as recommended, that be the thing you do. That way, that establishes the slate, that's the one that says...
Yep.
7/11.
Seven eleven. Okay. Got it.
That way, it establishes that slate of projects that we have to up or down vote on at the next council meeting. So...
Mr. President?
And then I will, I would like a copy of that, so I have that.
I withdraw my...
Yes, and that includes the next change.
Okay, Ms. Adams?
Mr. President, I withdraw my motion.
Mr. Gordon, you want to withdraw the second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I would like to make a motion to accept the draft as of 7/11/16 with the adjustments as explained by Ms. Odom.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to accept the proposed allocations as shown on the copies titled Draft as of 7/11/16. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Is there any further discussion on, from counsel, under the public hearing portion? Seeing none, I'm going to give the third and final call. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the allocations for the 2016-17 program year of CDBG allocations, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll declare that public hearing closed. Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that item B, C, and D be received and filed, and item A, B, receive, file, and approve.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion?
Actually, A and B should be received, filed, and approved. Because it's continuing to be shared publicly here.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
Withdraw my motion. And we'll make a motion to receive and file items C and D, receive, file, and approve items B and A.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve items A and B, and to receive and file items C and D. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Sally. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2016 budget amendments.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2017 tax budget.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for dispersment of funds from the asset forfeiture account.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for dispersment of funds from the asset forfeiture account.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter to an agreement with Colleen Company Associates.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Data Systems Manager requesting legislation to purchase new network switches.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number seven be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven and to authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Auditor regarding the contract labor report.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that communication number eight receive and file.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit to Ambridge Hospitality, 803 South Leonard.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number eight, or excuse me, number nine, be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine and to authorize the clerk to file a notice of no objection with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a new permit to Kroger Limited at Side 15 West Elm Street.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed, and the Council Secretary able to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10 and to authorize the council clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to grant an easement to United Telephone Company.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed, and legislation's on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, under Reports of Officials, we have Bill Bradish, Palmer Energy Company, regarding electric aggregation. Did I say your last name correctly?
Thank you. Good evening. Bill Bradish, Palmer Energy, Toledo. It's in Ohio. It's up north a little bit. Good evening. I'm happy to state that I'm not here to ask for any funds and hopefully provide some opportunities for some savings. The topic is electric aggregation. First of all, Palmer is a energy consulting company, not tied to any utilities, any suppliers, totally unbiased, and currently the consultants to the County Commissioners Association for the entire state. Have been working with that program for quite a few years. Primarily, in excess of 50 counties right now are participating, pooling their resources and obtaining reduced electric and gas rates for the facilities that they own. In addition, there's many counties participating in what's called electric aggregation, which is an opportunity to obtain reduced electric rates for your constituents, your residents, and small businesses. This is a program that's available through and dictated by Ohio Code. There's a couple different ways to go about it, but the reason I'm here today is because many entities within the county are already participating in this. Four years ago, the County Commissioners started a program. The entire unincorporated area of the county is participating. And allow me to read the other entities that are. I know the villages of Beaver Dan Bluffton, Cairo, Fort Shawnee, Harrod, Lafayette, and Spencerville. This does not pertain to anyone who is in the co-ops, if you will. The, you have Mid-Ohio and someone else, if I'm not mistaken, that are your rural electric opportunities. Those people, this doesn't touch them, they continue doing what they're doing. This is an opportunity for everybody else to pool together and get reduced electric rates. The program that has been instituted within the county is what's called an opt-out program. And an opt-out program per Ohio Code requires a ballot issue. And county-wide, the commissioners were able to do that, but that only applies to unincorporated areas. All incorporated areas have to do individual ballots on their own, which these other entities did four years ago. And the reason we're bringing it up now is their agreement is going to expire in '18 with some RFPs going out in '17. And the city of Lima would so choose to participate in such a program that would greatly enhance the rest of the county, obviously. We, there are currently a little over 8,000 residents participating. Additional 1,600 small businesses are participating. Small businesses can participate if they utilize less than 700,000 kilowatt-hours a year. And can, and of those that are participating, have been for the last four years, cumulatively, they have realized savings in excess of $5 million over the last four years. So the program has worked well. Surrounding counties of Van Wert and Hardin and entities in Nagles are all participating and will all come due when this agreement comes due again in '18. So it's a great opportunity to take a look at it. I'm here to present it to you, let you know how it works. An opt-out program is such that everyone who's eligible is included unless they so choose not to be. Versus an opt-in program where I have to raise my hand to say I want to be in. Opt-out programs present an opportunity for lower prices because everyone's included to begin with. The suppliers know that, they're going to give us a better price to begin with. Okay? Questions at this point? Yes, sir.
Okay. Does this affect just only residential customers?
And any commercial customers that utilize under that 700,000 threshold.
Okay. So those utilizing under the 700,000 are automatically in the group?
Eligible, yes.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. When you say eligible, if a measure's put on the ballot and passed, they would have to opt out or they'd be included, just like the residents.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, it's important for businesses.
Very much so.
Quite frankly, we have a lot of small businesses in our community whose proprietors don't necessarily live inside the city.
Correct.
Okay? And I haven't talked to any, talked to any to know whether they, do you wish they were out of the county where they have it or could have it, that sort of thing. For the municipality of Lima, that is a separate ballot issue and a separate buying group, if you will, than, separate from the county.
It can be or cannot be.
Explain, please, the options.
First of all, yes, it's a separate ballot.
Okay.
You would, you would need to initiate a ballot. And at that point, you're simply, you're simply asking the constituents to agree to allow the city to act on their behalf to aggregate for better rates.
Okay.
Okay? There is currently a program through the County Commissioners that you could choose to join, together with them. You could function on your own, or you could pool together. Okay? Someone has to be an aggregator within the state and certified with the PUCO. The County Commissioners are already certified with the, with the PUCO to hold the paperwork, to be the aggregator, if you will.
Okay. And I guess I'm looking at it from a legislative standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
We have to determine whether we're simply going to act on our own as the aggregator, then put it on the ballot, as opposed to we have to say we're going to join with the county and then we still put it on the ballot, but do we put it on the same ballot issue as the county residents vote on?
Irregardless, you're putting it on the ballot as a separate issue. You don't even have to determine before the ballot how you're going to handle it or what, who you're going to join with.
Okay. That's...
The ballot issue is the ballot issue and it passes. It gives you the right to act on this at any time in the future and it's ever been.
Okay.
And once you pass it, it's passed. How you, how you implement it, then, is up to you.
Okay. That can be defined later.
Defined later.
Okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, the ballot issue is basically the first step, Mr. President, and then after that, you're deciding how to proceed forward.
Okay.
Yep. Great question.
Are there any other questions from council members?
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
Let's say we decide to do this and our voters go ahead and pass. If we allow or we join up with the county to be our aggregator, does that give us more of a, you know, a brokering power? Or does it really matter either way?
It matters a lot. It's all about the numbers. It's all the buying power. The 8,000 residents I mentioned right now, you potentially could double that, that count by adding the city of Lima to that and adding that to the other surrounding counties that are participating. The greater the number, the greater the price.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
So, so if we, if the community decide to join together and get this great price, is that price fixed or is it variable?
It's fixed. Yep. It would be a fixed price for a determined term. Any, most, mostly agreements recently have been two- to three-year terms. And then, and then renegotiated at the expiration of those terms. And most recently, we've been able to negotiate zero termination fees so that you're, if you're in it and later decide you want to be out, you can get out at no charge.
But it has to be during that period, like a three-year period?
Well, there is an automatic three-year per the Ohio Code, and you're absolutely right. But by negotiating a zero termination fee, if we're able to do that, even within those three years, you could opt out at any time.
Okay.
You wouldn't be exposed to that.
Okay. So also, is there a cap as to how much the rate can go up in that three-year period?
It can't go up. It's fixed.
Okay. But once the three-year period has expired and the next three-year starts, is there a cap as to how it can deviate from the original cost?
No, it's, it's a brand-new RFP. It would be a brand, based on market conditions, and would be a brand-new RFP to all certified suppliers to bid on the business for another term.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
Yes. I just want to make sure because we, we had some, just got done with one that I'm dealing with, a statute with.
Mm-hmm.
They said the same thing, they rehearsed the same thing.
Okay.
Saying that they will not have to pay anything back. As soon as they counseled out, they got a big bill in the mail.
And that's a great point.
And they saying that you guys telling people this, this is what I talked to the electric company about. They said you should, you should read it over. And then I had opportunity to read it over on the fine line there. You're not there for six months, you're going to pay for it.
Yeah. Now, this is entirely separate, but you're absolutely right. Okay? Many of you may already be in a third-party agreement for your electric. You may, you may, you get these things in the mail all the time. You sign up with somebody for a third party, a little bit better rate than what you're paying the utility, which is fine. Okay? But in those individual agreements, there are termination fees.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the fine print that you're talking about. And so if I individually elect to take someone and take their price for 12 months, and in six months I decide to get out, I'm probably going to be exposed to termination fees. If you're in this group buying program, what I'm telling you is we've been able to negotiate zero termination fees. Okay? Now, the program that the rest of the county is in right now that expires in '18, when we did that four years ago, it had a $50 termination fee. Since then, some recent ones have been able to be zero. But the individual ones you're talking about, I've seen those be up to a couple hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it is.
And anyone who's in a third party, if we were to proceed with this, and people are already in a third party, I'd recommend you review that first before you jump into this program. program. Don't necessarily get out of the one you're in until it expires if you're going to be exposed to termination fees. And in fact, if you're in a third-party agreement when these letters go out to opt out, you would not even receive one because the database would show that you're already in a third-party supply. Doesn't mean you can't join. You could still join, but the initial mailing, you wouldn't be included.
Okay.
Because you're already with a third party.
Normally, we go all the way around.
I know.
I'm going to interject because I want to clarify something. So if I've signed up at my house, say through apples to apples, whatever, and I'm in a contract from, for a three-year contract, not that they exist, but a three-year contract that expires in 2019.
Yes.
If we go aggregation and we have a contract that starts in 2018...
Mm-hmm. And you like the price?
And I like the price. I still have to stay where I am or eat the termination fees there to join.
Correct.
Correct? If I let that lapse, do I automatically get brought into the aggregation? Or do I have to take a specific action because, quite frankly, that's going to be tricky for people?
Yeah. And what happens is, at the expiration, when we have this program going, the supplier will, most of the time on a quarterly or semi-annual basis, send out new letters to people who have moved in, to new eligible people. At that time, if you expire, you'd probably show up now in the database as being eligible and will receive a letter to join the program.
Okay.
Okay? Or you could call and say, hey, I expired last Friday, or I am expiring next Friday, and I want to get in now to your program.
Okay.
Either way, that can be done. Okay? But I always caution, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. President.
No. Just aside, that I know you don't have any control over. But one of my things, one of my problems with the whole deregulation process is that if the government is good with aggregation, then the PUCO should be required to notify homeowners that their contract with their provider is about to expire and they have aggregation available to them.
Couldn't agree more.
But they don't do that, okay? The other thing I wanted to ask is, you mentioned a three-year contract. How often does this go on the ballot, though?
Possibly. We have entities going on the ballots every election period throughout the state.
Well, I mean, if we put it on the ballot, say in the spring of 2017, how, do we have to go back to the ballot for renewal of the process?
No, sir.
So it's, once it's on, you're in, you're the aggregator, and then the contract is what comes up.
That's correct.
Okay?
That's correct.
All right.
That's correct.
Because I was thinking with a four-year ballot cycle and a three-year contract.
No, no. And I'll be honest, when deregulation started, what was it, 2003 or whatever, there were entities that passed it at that time, and electric rates weren't that bad. They didn't even act on the program until five or six years later. All you've done past the ballot issue.
Okay.
At that point.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. I guess the other note that I made was that, and just to clarify, Mr. Glenn, I know that you were talking about termination fees. And, I mean, those exist now. If I'm with XYZ Corporation for my electric and somebody else has a cheaper rate and I decide to jump to them, XYZ Corporation can charge me a termination fee, okay? And that's, I mean, that's out there now. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I wasn't a big fan of this three, four years ago because I don't, I still, I understand it now a little bit that I've been shopping on my own.
Sure.
Usually, months after a contract has expired, because nobody tells you it expired, I couldn't understand how adding a layer would save money. I get it now.
Yeah, yeah. And there's protection in this with those expirations. In other words, in this program, when this term expires, the other one's going to kick in with new letters to you on what the new rate and the new term is.
Okay.
For you to have the opportunity to say, yes, I still want to do this or not.
Okay.
So that automatically comes to you when any new term or rate is negotiated.
Okay.
That's...
There's another opt-out.
Per Ohio code, there's another opt-out.
Okay.
That has to happen and does happen, yes.
All right.
That's a great point.
Mr. Mayor?
A couple things. First of all, as you know, the city has, for its own electric, has conducted a couple of the worst auctions that the state has owned from contracts to us. This would not improve those.
No.
So we continue to have some of those previous auctions.
Is that a function of us being a user over the 700,000 kilowatt hours?
No, I think we could actually be in the...
You probably have facilities that fall in both areas.
Okay.
But you've pooled them into a contract with all the facilities, so they would remain where they are.
There until those contracts expire, but then they could be...
Considered.
Considered and, I guess...
But...
Strengthen our position, possibly.
Possibly, but you would probably pursue what you're currently doing first.
Yeah.
Yes, and I would recommend that.
Okay.
My second comment is a question. By what date, if the city was interested in proceeding to the ballot issue, by what date would we need to do that to participate in the larger pool?
I can safely say that if you are on the ballot by, for the spring, in the spring, you would be able to participate in that pool, that next pool, that larger pool. Obviously, it's like any ballot issue, you have to be to the Board of Elections 90 days prior to the election for the November issues. It's coming up the first Tuesday in August or whatever that date is right now for the November ballots. We'd have to get there. But to answer the mayor's question, to participate in what I'm talking about and the rest of the county and trying to get everybody together, if you were to be successful on a spring ballot, we would have time to coordinate that.
Okay. You commented on the total savings for folks in the county that now participate on a per-household basis. How much was that?
That was, over this last four-year period, it's been an average of $145 a year per household, has been the electric savings. Remember now, this is basically on just half of our bills. It's on the generation side of our bills, the electric supply, not the distribution and transportation. So we're saving on 50% of our bills, which are deregulated. But it has been approximately $145 a year for each household.
Any other comments, questions?
And as a side note, we are doing these programs through the County Commissioners Association, as I've mentioned to the mayor, as effective in October. Palmer Energy will also be facilitating similar programs through the Ohio Municipal League. And that agreement's on the table, and we'll be doing the same thing through the league.
Okay.
And those, which all the more gives us the ability to coordinate and bring more higher numbers together, to your point.
Mr. President?
Mr. Low? Yes, sir. Are you the cheapest of all your other competitors?
We are not the supplier, councilman. We are, we are the negotiator, and we are the advisor and the consultant. We put it out to bid for, to the suppliers and negotiate the best market price for the program that we would recommend. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
We get paid.
Uh, that's...
Okay? We get paid. That is done, there is no additional payment or, the fee is embedded in the kilowatt-hour price. It's negotiated with the supplier, so the supplier pays us.
I get it.
And be happy to share, be happy to share that. And currently, through the County Commissioners Association, we rebate a portion of that back to the County Commissioners Association, which in turn rebates it back to the county.
How much do they give us?
It's not a lot of money.
How much do they give us?
I would say they probably got about, maybe $3,000 to general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for council members. I know this is, for some, the first time that we've heard about it. Is there, I guess I'm not so much interested in a sense of your position yet, but a sense of your time that you need to review this so that we can have another discussion on it. I don't want to just let it languish and then we end up February 1st missing the March, you know, spring election deadline or something. Is it something that, I mean, we can come back to it in the middle of August and maybe have a council of the whole meeting and discuss it a little bit further? Sam and Todd are shaking their head, yes?
In my opinion, I mean, I was here the last time they came through, four years ago or five years ago, and they came through when the county did it. So I'm very familiar with it, so I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
Mr. President, I can think of a lot of things to do with $145, so I think it's, we should explore that option.
Okay. Any other side?
I think, I think probably, probably the concern would be the $50,000 bill that we would have to foot here and where would it come from, you know? But I think overall, the program for putting it on the ballot...
The 50,000, I missed, I guess I missed the 50,000.
I thought I heard Mr. Geiger say that putting it on the ballot would be...
About 10 grand.
That's about 10.
Okay, all right, that's a lot better. Okay, I'm not sure, excuse me, I'm not sure where I got 50,000 from, but...
And that's only if, if we have, don't have anything else that's already on the ballot that would require us to be there anyway.
Doesn't that fluctuate with the amount of issues?
Yes. That's commonplace. I mean, even our elections, our offices have a cost borne by the city. I'm sorry, Mr....
Could we go council as a whole, so we can just try to advantage and disadvantage, just bring it all up and see where we're at?
Yeah, I'm not asking for a motion to pass this right now.
I know, but I'm saying, I agree with you about council as a whole there.
Okay.
So we can just put it all out and everything on the table.
And I believe you're going to have more questions, and in the interest of time, I tried to not be too detailed. And I, there are more details I could be more than happy to provide, and I'm sure your questions will spur that also.
Okay.
And be more than happy to share that.
Okay. I'm going to, with that said, I'm going to make a motion that we refer this issue to council of the whole. We'll set a date later for August. The motion's the second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Bradish, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And for the information in advance.
And any further questions, certainly Sally knows how to get hold.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Reports of committees, the Public Works Committee?
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
The Public Works Committee met on 6/14/16 at 5:30 PM here in council chambers, and everybody's received a copy of the minutes, and I asked for the minutes to be received, filed, and approved.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee report submitted by Councilor Gordon. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 136-16.
This is a second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor's transfer title of 1440 West Springs Street to Lima, Allen County Neighbors and Partnership.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that ordinance 136-16 be moved to its third reading.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance 136-16 on its third reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 140-16.
Amending, this is also a second reading, amending section 272.03 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 140-16 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 140-16 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 140-16.
Amending, this is also a second reading, amending section 272.03 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 140-16 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 140-16 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
No.
Ms. Crayer?
No.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And that's it.
Ordinance 140-16 has five yes votes and three no votes. It will go on to its third reading. Ordinance 142-16.
A second reading, amending section 1254.01 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, governing adoption of standard codes.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that ordinance 142-16 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 142-16 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
No.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 142-16 has been approved by, passed by a six-to-two vote. Ordinance 146-16.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Ms. Crayer?
I move that ordinance 146-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 146-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 147-16 has been passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 147-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 147-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 148-16.
Adopting the tax budget for the 2017 fiscal year for the City of Lima.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 148-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 148-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
I didn't hear it.
No?
She called, somebody...
Sneezed.
Okay, ordinance 148-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 149-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Colleen Kaler Associates.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 149-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 149-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 149-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 150-16.
Authorization payment from the asset forfeiture fund.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles?
I move that ordinance number 150-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 150-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 150-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 159-16.
Authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to United Telephone Company DBA CenturyLink.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 152-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 152-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 159-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 152-16.
Authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to United Telephone Company DBA CenturyLink.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 152-16 be passed on its first reading. Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 152-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 153-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 153-16.
Amending ordinance 92-16.
Uh, Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 151-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 153-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 151-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 152-16.
Authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to United Telephone Company DBA CenturyLink.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 152-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 152-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 152-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 153-16.
Establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth, and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 153-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 153-16 on its first reading, is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Ms. Crayer?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ordinance 153-16 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Tonight, we have miscellaneous business, Mr. Glenn.
Oh, boy. Howard, need to talk to Howard. He's showing the mic. I gotta ask you, oh, no, folks, okay. Hey, Howard, we have a problem with the bicycle route on Cedar Street, bike trail there. The problem is, we need a fence there, at least around the houses in the area. What been happening there, they've been using the area to walk behind people's houses, and I had an opportunity to talk to the manager there, and we got some of the folks that already knew their, their contract due to all the noise that come in the back. People walking at nighttime, some trying to peek through their windows of their kids. This was told to me, so I had an opportunity to talk to some of them. It's any way we can find any, and I wish we had brought that up before we got it put there, a fence right there with the houses that, on Cedar Street, little curve there. You got about eight houses in that area that they use it to cut across in there and to go to the park, and they've been using it at nighttime a lot. I was gonna talk to the park ranger, but the park ranger, it's not available, it's about nine o'clock, you know, but they, most of the time, they've been done late at night. So, it's in the future we can look at, trying to look at a fence there or something.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 153-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 153-16 against the owners of the establishment to attempt to obtain a court order to close them down as a public nuisance. But as I was in the middle of preparing that paperwork, I received a call from the owner's attorney, giving me information relative to some potential plans that the owners have for the bar, part of which included them voluntarily closing the bar, which was effective last Thursday, July 7th. So, it's been closed since that time. In fact, the owners have signed a memorandum of understanding relative to their agreement to close the bar. Nobody else is allowed in there. The police department has the authority to arrest anyone who is unauthorized in there, and in fact, the police department now is in possession of a key to the premises. The owners are in the process of trying to develop the plans that they have come up with, and in the near future, I think there should be some clearer understanding of that process, but in the meantime, they've agreed to close it down. And if they were to attempt to go back, the paperwork is still on my desk and could be ready to go very quickly. We will not hesitate to file. Can't guarantee what the result is, because that's, somebody else makes that decision, but we certainly can try, and we will make every effort to do so if it's not resolved in an agreeable manner. Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Ms. Crayer.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, this Sunday, the 17th, from 1 to 4, at the Lack of Resource Center, the Allen County Housing Custourium is holding a Welcome Home Lima Fair. This is gonna be a great opportunity for people who are interested in buying a home, or if you're already in the community, you can get out and meet your neighborhood associations, but it is designed to help people who are first-time home buyers. They can meet with lenders, they can see houses that are on the market. There will be lots of different entities there that'll help people get into homes here in Lima, and it's gonna be a wonderful opportunity. So, it's 1 to 4 this Sunday at the Lack Nip Resource Center on Spring Street. Also, to piggyback off of Mr. McLean, this Sunday started, the Council of the Arts has music every Sunday night from 7 to 8:30 at the Down and Frot Park. This is gonna go here until... I, I just want to encourage people to be hopeful. You know, it's not the end of the world, even though it may seem, seem to be, uh, the end of the world. You know, we've had tragedies like this before. Nine eleven was a, was a horrible thing that happened to our country, but, you know, little by little, we rebound. And, you know, and if we look over our history, there's been a lot of things that have happened in our country that have been horrific, and, and this is just another one. Not to slight it, not to say that, you know, we shouldn't be concerned about it, but we still have to talk, you know, as if there's hope. Because in our, even in our city here, I hear so many people talking about doomsday. They talk about, you know, Lima is getting worse and worse with all the shootings. And I have to, have to encourage them to say, hey, you know, you know, you can't sit around with your head down. You can't say, "I'm gonna leave Lima." I can't, we can't say that nothing's gonna ever be totally right. It just always gonna be things going on. It's just how we approach it with our temperament, you know, our attitude about that, you know. A lot of us can do things about it, you know. We, in our own little circle, we can make a difference, you know, with, with the way that we talk, the tone of our, of our attitude and so forth. And so, even in your little circle, as you hear people talking about, you know, all the tragedy that's happened, let us say some kind words. Let us say something to give these people hope, because people are feeling hopeless. They're feeling like, you know, this world is coming to an end, you know, but, you know, the, the person that's in total control, he still is in control. It may not seem like it, but it came as no surprise to the man above that this happened. Nothing catches him by surprise. And so, we have to take it and strive. We have to remember that things are always gonna happen in our country. You know, when you're dealing with people, there's always gonna be things. So, but let us be a dispenser of hope and not doom and, and, and the world's coming to an end, you know. Make sure we say some kind words to these people and give them hope for the future, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a few weeks ago, uh, I had the opportunity to go out to, uh, Schoonover Park on a Friday evening and enjoy our observatory for the first time in my fifty-plus years. Um, and man, that was neat. And I really, uh, I think it's a big deal that we have this thing here in Lima. We've, we've had this, uh, observatory, uh, for a really long time, nineteen sixty-three, which is longer than, uh, Mayor Berger's been the mayor. Which is, that's one thing that, yeah. But it's, it's really, really an awesome place. I just want to encourage people to, if you haven't been out there in a while, go back out there. I learned so much. It was fascinating. I took my wife and some of my kids and my grandkids, and, oh, man, I had to drag the grandkids out of there, so it was, it was great. So, and the only thing other than that is I would just remind people to be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think we all celebrated a, um, event about a week ago. And if anybody didn't go down to the park, broke park, uh, they missed a great show. I think all day long, it started off with a little bit of rain, but the, uh, five-k run went off successfully, and, um, you know, when we got done with that, I had to go take a nap, but we really, really did. There was a large crowd, and it happened all day. And even, even till the evening, there was crowds all through there, so, um, uh, I think I saw more fireworks away from the place than I saw at the place sometimes. It felt like the whole weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, everybody had a lot of money to spend for fireworks, it seemed like. So, uh, I'm glad everybody enjoyed it, and everybody, from what I heard so far, was been safe, and I think that's one of our jewels that we have at our city. So, no one got to go down there. They should have taken the time. That's something that we put on, sponsored by the city and several other sponsors, the Lima News, and, and, and those people put a lot of time and effort of putting that show on. Very safe environment, food, you know, rides for kids. It was a phenomenal event. And I think that if you missed it, shame on you. You know, we have, uh, all of the, um, different entities are putting on bands in the park. Look at, there's, there's noth, no one that can say there's nothing to do on Friday or Saturday night in Lima, Ohio, or even Sunday night. They have those bands in, on Sunday. So, uh, look around you, grab a neighbor, take them out to the park on a Sunday afternoon or on Saturday or whenever they play, and enjoy yourself a little bit. Smell the roses. That's what's gonna make our city better. Uh, the only other thing I have is, uh, Northside Neighborhood holds their meeting the third, Tuesday of every month, which will be the nineteenth. Uh, that starts at seven o'clock at St. Mark's Church. That's across from the school on Metcalf Street. Come out, you have an issue. We have the C O P officer usually's there. Uh, that's really handy and convenient for our neighborhoods. He, he hears what's going on and can take action and brings it back to, uh, the chief and his fellow officers, and they can help you. So, uh, I do want to thank the chief and all the police departments because there's a lot of people out there that was act, I thought were acting and having a good time on the Fourth of July, and I didn't see any issues whatsoever. So, your department did a very good job out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you. Um, got about three or four different items. One thing I want to know is, is there anything possible that we can do concerning the lighting with the underpass on North Union Street? I know we own that property at the, off of Wayne Street, but it is extremely dark. I spoke with a resident who says she didn't feel comfortable. Um, her car had broke down. She didn't feel comfortable going up under that bridge, but because it was a shorter route to her house, she chose to take it. And a gentleman approached her, and she said she had to run for a couple blocks. So, that really bothered me. I just need to know if there's some way, we used to have lights on that underpass, yeah, years ago. We no longer have that. But if we can get some kind of lighting, uh, maybe from our property, uh, going across that stretch, uh, to help out for those that might just have to, uh, walk or be put in that situation again, it'll help them out. Maybe someone to see them. The other issue with lighting is, uh, we were promised a light at the corner of Central and Elm. Uh, if somebody can send me an email, let me know where we're at on that. Um, I know there's some costs with that, but I need to know so I can let the residents know how soon that'll be. Uh, we've been waiting on that for a while now. Uh, the railroad tracks on McDonald between Wayne and McKibben are outrageous. I, I know in the past, uh, our president asked that a letter be sent. We communicate with them in some kind of way, and they jumped on it, uh, pretty quickly. But, uh, the railroad tracks, again, on McDonald between Wayne and McKibben, I, I think it's time for the city to say something or make a phone call. If we could, please, and get those tracks fixed.
Don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Lowe, but isn't that, uh, one of the crossings that's being repaired the next, this week and next?
Well, I hope so. Okay.
Is it in fact the street's being closed so they can do that?
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, striping. When you are headed up north Maine, uh, after you pass McKibben Street, uh, actually directly in front of Holler, uh, goes from two lanes to one lane. And I have witnessed about four or five near misses, uh, where individuals think that it continues in a two-lane, uh, thoroughway. It is, it is not. It goes to one. Um, honestly, I think maybe it needs either re-striped a little bit sooner or maybe cut it out from, um, uh, McKibben. Uh, but the streets merge right there, and they're literally racing, trying to get into the one lane. And, uh, if there's no cars parked on the east side of Main Street, they race. It's ridiculous. And my fear is the individuals that stay in the facility next to, uh, where Cybert Hosselman used to be, they may get hit because some of those use motorized, uh, wheelchairs. So, if we could, uh, look at that striping over there. And, uh, this has been weighing on my heart all week. I'm tired of seeing individuals getting killed. And in my ward, there's been a couple places that have been getting a lot of attention lately. I had every intention of coming forth and doing what I could to get, uh, the bar known as the G-Spot liquor license, uh, taken. Uh, our law director said that he has been in talks with them, and at this time, I would like to see if he would publicly, uh, speak on those talks.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gregor?
Counselor Lowe, uh, and the rest of council, um, this past, uh, shooting was last week. And this past Thursday, I was, uh, literally at my desk preparing the necessary paperwork to file a lawsuit against the owners of the establishment to, uh, attempt to obtain a court order to close them down as a public nuisance. But as I was in the middle of preparing that paperwork, I received a call from, uh, the owner's attorney, giving me information relative to, uh, some potential plans that the owners have for the bar, part of which included them voluntarily closing the bar, uh, which was effective last Thursday, July seventh. So, it's been closed since that time. Um, and in fact, uh, the owners have, uh, signed a memorandum of understanding relative to their agreement to close the bar. Uh, nobody else is allowed in there. Uh, the police department has the authority to arrest anyone uh, who's unauthorized in there. Um, and in fact, the police department now is in possession of a key to the premises. The, the owners are in the process of, uh, trying to, uh, develop the plans that they have come up with. And, um, uh, in the, the near future, I think there should be some clearer understanding of, of, um, that process. But in the meantime, they've agreed to close it down. Uh, and, uh, if they were to attempt to go back, uh, the paperwork is still on my desk and could be ready to go, uh, very quickly. Uh, we will not hesitate to file. Uh, can't guarantee what the result is because that's, somebody else makes that decision, but we certainly can try, and we will make every effort to do so if it's not resolved in an agreeable manner.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Ms. Crayer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, this Sunday, the seventeenth, from one to four at the Lackey Resource Center, the Allen County Housing Constancy is holding a, um, Welcome Home Lima Fair. This is gonna be a great opportunity for people who are interested in buying a home, um, or if you're already in the community, you can get out and meet your neighborhood associations, but, um, it is designed, uh, to help people who are first-time home buyers. They can meet with lenders. They can see houses that are on the market. Um, there will be, uh, lots of different entities there that'll help people get into, uh, homes here in Lima, and it's gonna be a wonderful opportunity. So, it's wonderful, the Sunday at the Lackey Resource Center on Spring Street. Um, also to piggyback off of, uh, Mr. McLean, this, um, Sunday started, the Council of the Arts has music every Sunday night from seven to eight-thirty at the, um, Down and Frot Park. This is gonna go here until September the fifth. The music varies about the style, but every concert I have been to in the last, I can't count the years, uh, has, oh, it has been excellent. Uh, they sell slaw dogs. If you have never had a slaw dog, I challenge you to try it. It's delicious. Uh, so, if you want to check out the band, um, or, you know, weather, rain out, if they're gonna have it, if it's raining, look at the Council of the Arts website. Also, talking about area festivals, of course, every Friday night you can come down to Rally in the Square. But something a little, uh, near and dear to my heart, this week, uh, really Thursday through Sa- Saturday is gonna be Wapakoneta's Having Your Summer Moon Festival. Um, I encourage you to go to that event. It's gonna be, they're giving away iPods for kids and canoe races and wiener dog races and just stuff to do. So, if you're looking for something to do this weekend with your family, um, come down for that. Uh, I know that Credit Suisse just had a big event that people were really excited about. So, there are things to do in this community. Um, you just do a little digging. Also, a couple weeks ago, I did a ride along with Officer, uh, Sam Chris Junior. I told him I would publicly thank him, and I hope that he gets a little embarrassed on my behalf. Uh, that was, he, uh, we were on some adventures together that night. Um, but it is, it is a small community, and, um, even if you, even if, when things get tough, you just listen and you open your eyes and you open your heart. Um, we had an incident, uh, that when we were riding together, that I had to sit in the car for an hour and a half and patiently wait, um, and pray that everyone involved, everyone involved was safe. And then a couple days later, one of the kids at Ohio State, he's a, um, he's a veteran now, so he's not necessarily a kid. He's in his thirties. He was telling this side of the story from his perspective, and it, it just really kind of brought the community together in a smaller sense. So, to him, chief, so I say thanks. Um, also, uh, thank you to all the police officers who worked the Fourth of July. Uh, that event, as Sam said, was efficient. I live in the neighborhood that surrounds the park, right? And I, you know, come two o'clock, three o'clock on the day of the fireworks, you cannot get into your driveway. Like, you gotta, like, pay people to get out of your parking spots, right? But that day, uh, it was coming up in the park. It was fast and efficient. They were out for another hour and a half cleaning up parking, uh, cones, and it was really, really impressive to see, um, how the communication went between any situations that they had. And so, thank you to all of them who stayed and worked. That was a long day, I know, for all of them. So, the last and the least, that's it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I who have nothing.
We get you every time, don't we?
All the good stuff's taken. Um, I want to look at, uh, I'll get to her in a second. I'm thinking of this now, and I want, and I want to get it off the table before I forget, okay? Just mark, council members should mark their calendars for August fifteenth to Monday evening at six P M. That's when I'll be calling the council, the whole meeting for electric aggregation discussion. I'm sorry, Ms. Adams.
I have nothing tonight.
Not now.
Hey, I did ask you if you voted when everybody, you know, trounced you out.
It's just one of those nights.
Yes.
Must be a full moon.
Well, you have nothing, and I have nothing.
Let's go.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that city council adjourn, um, until July twenty-fifth at seven P M. in these chambers.
Second.
The motion in the second is that Lima City Council adjourn until July twenty-fifth at seven P M. in these chambers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries, and we are adjourned.